We're going to call the meeting to order because I see by in person and online, we have a quorum of the city council, city of Hillsborough. In attendance, so I will call the meeting to order. First item on our agenda this afternoon is approval of our consent agenda. First, we have vouchers totaling two hundred ninety-one thousand, one hundred eighteen dollars, forty-two cents. Did everyone receive copies of the vouchers? Were there any questions regarding the vouchers? Second, we have minutes from our March four, twenty twenty-five regular meeting. And our March thirteen, twenty twenty-five special council meeting. Did everyone receive copies of the minutes? Were there any questions or corrections to the minutes? Finally, we have a pay app for the Adams Street project. Did everyone receive copies of that? Matt, were there any thing you'd like to add to that?
No, this is a, this is just for the water service part, portion of the plant, or portion of the project. So there's a ten percent retainage you'll see on there, so they're taking off ten percent. That's pretty typical for when we get close to wrapping up a project, we'll pay them out except for that retainage to make sure that they finish the project.
Okay, were there any questions regarding the pay app? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted. Councilman McCarty moves.
I'll second it.
Councilman Wilkins, seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'm gonna, is that thumbs up and aye?
That's an aye, yep.
Okay, very good. So if anybody opposed? Motion carries. We now come to our first opportunity for public comment. Is there anybody here from the public that would like to address the council? I see we have just the press online. Jane, you're the only, you're the only public here right now. Any comment? Okay. We'll close our first public comment opportunity and then we're going to move into the city property and liability insurance proposals. Mr. Stiles, I'm going to let you introduce our guest, please.
Yeah, okay, so we've got two proposals. We actually requested a couple, well, one other from Midwest Public Risk, but they declined to quote it due to some underwriting issues with them. So say we have Act three sixty, they've been our insurance agent for two years now. They're representing EMC, which you've got a copy of their proposal in there, the renewal there. For two hundred and eight thousand, eight seventy-six. So we've got Joe Allen and Eric Rector here from, from E, well, from Act three sixty, representing EMC. And then we also have K Camp, Mora is here from K Camp to talk a little bit about the proposal there. They actually came up, presented to us at the last meeting, I believe, right? So, yeah, so we've got them here, or Mars here, and their proposal is one hundred and fifty-six thousand, seven nineteen. So, yeah, we can, I would, I think we have Joe and Eric on first, so if you want to invite them up.
Yeah, gentlemen, if you come up here to the podium, please. You didn't have anything you wanted on the computer, did you?
I did not, but I do have a couple of hands.
That's fine, all right, please, yeah, please do.
So I just will start out with this first. So that's kind of just the outline of our presentation this afternoon, and then this would be something that I'll refer to once I get to that place in the agenda.
And Jeff will make sure that we get you a copy of these as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Everybody get it? Great. That's good. Well, again, first of all, I just want to thank you very much for allowing us to come today and, and to be your insurance provider for the last two years. I think it was a good, we had a good, good run there, two years, and so I appreciate that opportunity. I want to do a couple of things today, and so first of all, first of all, first of all, I want to discuss a little bit the hard market, because I think there's a lot of people that just think that insurance companies are trying to take everybody, and it's just a matter of raising premiums all the time. And I want to give you a little bit of background about that is true, that premiums have gone up, but maybe some of the reason why. And so that's kind of the hard market discussion. Now, I want to talk just a little bit about EMC, and most of that you can just read yourself, but a couple of things I want to point out. And then I wanted to kind of have a little bit of a discussion in generality on pool coverages, and not coverages necessarily, but exposures that you have when you potentially write with a pool. So I'm going to kind of discuss those three things, okay? If anybody has any questions before I get started? Okay, great. So I mentioned that things are kind of crazy right now because we're in a hard market. So I've been in the insurance business for twenty years. But I talked to some people that have been in the business for forty years, and this is the worst hard market that we've had that most people can remember. And so what's a hard market? The hard market basically means a couple of things. It means that premiums are higher and that underwriting guidelines are much stricter, and there's a lot of things that kind of happen because of that. But those are kind of the main two points. So what's the opposite of a hard market? The opposite is a soft market, and soft market is, hey, premiums are low, everybody's really wanting to write new business, and they're grow, and they're growing. And so there's a lot of competition, keeps the premiums down, and businesses are making money, and so they are out there trying to write new business. So that competition is good, and they're maybe writing stuff that's outside of their box, so to speak. And so then that, that just means everybody's feeling like they're doing really good and wanting to grow. Well, probably four years ago, this kind of started, maybe a little bit before that, the hard market started coming. And basically what that caused that is there's really three fact, three fact. And I listed them there. So first off, the PNC companies over the last three or four years have not been making any money. In fact, in a lot of cases, in their PNC business, if you look purely at their underwriting gains, they've actually had losses. And some, some, for every dollar of premium, I'm sorry, every dollar premium that they got in, they're spending out in claims, one point six dollars, one point zero six, so like six cents on every dollar. So they're actually losing money if you kind of look at it as an average. So that's not what they want to be. And the reason that was happening is kind of threefold. One is that we've had in the last three or four years, we've had the worst claims in total dollars across the globe ever. And so it's been, that's been a huge cause. So all of our insurance companies go out and buy reinsurance. The reinsurance companies are a lot of times ending up, picking up the large majority of some of the costs of some of these large claims. And all of a sudden, they put a, they slammed the brakes. And they said, wait a minute, we're going to put some, so maybe some restrictions on reinsurance. We're going to look at the pricing that we're getting. And a lot of companies then, when they, every year, they reevaluate, reevaluate their reinsurance contracts from one year to the next, it might go up thirty-five or forty percent. So I think twenty-two to twenty-three, they had a very large increase. And so all these companies were kind of caught off guard with that, and that surprised them, shocked them. And all of a sudden, they had to figure out what they're going to do, okay? So, and, and that's, so they had the worst losses ever. You had the reinsurance companies kind of putting the brakes on them. Not only were they raising premiums, but they were also having very, making some of the companies having increased their retention. And that means kind of like they're deductible. So that also took a big chunk out of some of the insurance company's pocket. So again, they weren't very happy. So when you take those two things, those two things were enough to cause a problem. But then you factor in the inflation that we've had over the past four years, and then that really caused a lot of problems. And so the inflation, so just an example, but this is not just in roofing, but this is just an example. So if you take a normal home roof, three years ago, it costs, the average roof to be replaced is about twelve thousand dollars. Now it's eighteen thousand. So a fifty percent increase in the cost of labor, and the cost of construction materials, and all of those things. So it really put a bind on the insurance companies. And so all the insurance companies, they had some options. And, and all of them did some things differently. Some, some kept going and just drove right on down the road and, and were still doing, still doing business. Some companies decided to get out of certain states, get out of certain regions. Like we had several people in Kansas that didn't want to write personal lines anymore. You've heard that in, you've heard that in California with the fires, that, you know, things like that. So that was, that was widespread. Florida, maybe, for example. Missouri is one of those states that a lot of people didn't want to write, write business in. And that's not necessarily because of wind and hail, but more because of the liability climate and the legal climate there, and maybe easier to be sued for large amounts. So, so there's lots of those things. So the companies were doing some things. They were getting out of business. They were tightening their requirements, what they're going to write. They are raising deductibles, and they were taking rates. So it had a lot of increases. I'm sure if you looked at your, your own auto insurance, your home insurance, those have gone up. And, and if you go get a quote, sometimes you might find better rate for a little bit, but then guess what? Over time, it goes up too. So kind of, that's, that's kind of the game that we're in right now. Now, we hope, we're kind of thinking that twenty-five was going to be a good year for us, and it's going to start to ease off. And then we had the fires in California to start the, the year. So we'll see what that does. But that could be a big, kind of a kick in the pants to our hopeful recovery and getting out of this hard market. Typically, typically, a hard market lasts four or five years, and so we should be on the tail end of that and working our way to the good. So I just want to give you a little bit of understanding about why we're in with the situation that we're in and why premiums have gone up and why rates have gone up. That is why. So, and, and nobody's really safe in the PNC world. Thankfully, a lot of these insurance companies had very strong balance sheets, are able to be able to withstand some of those things. They also maybe had some investment income or something like that to help offset the losses that they were having in the PNC side. So some of those kind of things. So, that's very good. Any questions on that? Okay, I did want to just touch on, move on to the, to the EMC side of things, and I, you guys know, and you've been with EMC for a long time. You know about the quality of here that they are. So they've been around for over a hundred years. They're A rated by AM Best, and so every insurance carrier gets rated financially, and so they're very stable. They have one point five seven billion in surplus as of the end of twenty twenty-three. The twenty twenty-four numbers are not quite out yet, but again, looks very good and very strong. And so even in this mix of a rough, a rough timeframe in the insurance market, still look pretty good. We talked a little bit, and you guys know, and one of the points, the nice thing about the cities that they've been doing with EMC is that they've been having the dividend check, and so they are doing that again this year, and I'll touch based on that a minute. But this year, I think, Matt, you put in the proposal around fourteen. I, I double checked just right before I came, it's fourteen thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five, something like that is what they must going to be, and you're going to get that roughly in May timeframe. Back in twenty twenty-three, it was actually twenty-four nine. So it's almost twenty-five thousand in dividend. And again, that's in the middle of a hard market. So, and while it's not guaranteed, EMC has been writing cities for forty-five years. And in those forty-five years, only two years did they not do a dividend to the members of that group of municipalities. So, and then I'm just not going to read that paragraph, but just kind of their statement as to, you know, kind of their interest in staying in the, in the, in the market for municipalities. And so you can read that if, as you have time. So I just want to give you, any questions about EMC? Thanks. I could talk about policy issues and things like that, but I didn't want to bore you all to death. I mean, you guys are more familiar with some of those things, and, and we can, if you have questions about that, I'm happy to help with that. But those were the, kind of the main points I want to talk about, which is EMC and kind of who they are. So, so you had an idea. And then lastly, I wanted to visit just about pools in general. So if you want to flip, before you look at that bottom little story, you flip over to that other handout that I gave you. This is an excerpt of a white paper that the Kansas Association of Insurance Agencies put together a few years ago. And there's some points in here that I think is valuable as you look to consider a pool insurance, that you consider some of these points. And I'm not going to read all of it, but there's a couple of them that I want to point out. The first one is the guarantee fund. That's kind of the second bullet point there. And so insurance companies that sell insurance in Kansas have to put a little bit of money for every policy they write into this guarantee fund. And then if the insurance company goes out of business and can't, can't pay claims, this guarantee fund stands as a backup to help protect the insurers. So it's a really, kind of a good program. Now, there's limits to what they provide. I think the limit per claim is like three hundred thousand unless it's a work comp claim. So there are some limits, but there is some coverage for that. And it's also can be available if, say, you paid premium for the full year, and the business goes out of business halfway through, where you have half of your premium sitting there. Are you going to get it back or not? I don't know. They actually will help pay that as well. And two years ago, Maxia, Max Insurance, I don't know if anybody's heard of that, they've been around for a long time. In Kansas, they went out of business, the Kansas Department of Insurance shut them down basically because of financial concerns, and, and the guarantee fund came in and helped out when those people, head farmers that spent fifty or sixty thousand dollars a premium, halfway through the year, they're getting canceled, and they, you know, where's their twenty or thirty thousand dollars going to come from? Well, it came from the guarantee fund. So it was a pretty big deal. Also, people were, one person I know in particular had a house fire. They paid for the house, but they hadn't paid for the contents yet, and the contents could be several hundred thousand dollars, and they were waiting to get that money. So, but then it didn't come in time for the business going under, and the guarantee fund helped in, came in and stepped in and took care of that for that homeowner. So it's a big deal. Pools do not have to participate in it, and in the event that a pool goes out of business, they don't get money from the guarantee fund, or their people that are with the pools don't get that. So that is something you have to consider in that situation. So the guarantee fund is an important piece, important piece of protection to think about. The next one is form filing. The insurance company forms typically have to be approved through the Kansas Department of Insurance. And so, or the forms that they use, so that if they're using a form that's been approved, then they don't have to re, get it reapproved. But they have to get, use, they have to use approved forms in the state of Kansas, as long as you're admitted in state to do that. So, and the way I understand it is that pools do not have to do that. So I'm not saying that their forms are wrong, or there's anything wrong with the forms, but I'm just saying that's not, it's another kind of protection that you potentially lose if you're not using standardized forms. So something to think about. And then lastly, for pools is the premium assessment. It kind of goes along with the joint and several liability. Those two kind of points go together. But pools may assess their members in the event that the financial position becomes hazardous. Insurance companies cannot assess their policyholders. So what you're, what you're paying with an insurance company is what you're paying. Now, there are some that may audit a piece or that, piece of this or piece of that, work comp policies get audited, you know, those kinds of things. But, but frankly, they're still going to be based upon the rate and, and the exposure that you have. There won't be assessments coming. Now, I wanted to flip back to that, my agenda page, because there's just a little story that one of my coworkers ran into, and I think it's a story that people need to hear. So there was a Kansas Fire Department in an insurance pool back in two thousand and nine. Now, they were in that pool in two thousand and nine, they moved the next year to a standard insurance company the next year. So their contribution for that year in two thousand and nine was twenty-six hundred dollars. Twelve years later, so they've been out of the pool for twelve years. That pool was short of money, so they sent a capital call letter in twenty twenty-one for fourteen thousand dollars, or five point five times the original contribution amount. So five point five times the twenty-six hundred, okay? So now, I'm not saying that's going to happen, but I'm just saying there's an exposure there that can happen in the event that the, a pool has financial difficulties and down the road comes back, and it's kind of pretty much unlimited exposure that you could have. Now, the assessment for the current pool bid that you have is one hundred and fifty-six, plus a little bit of change. If five point five times that amount is eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand, right? So that's a, that's a big, that's a big number. Now, I'm not saying that's going to happen again. I'm just saying it's some exposure that could happen because of, all right? And the other point I wanted to make is that five pools in Kansas have made assessments, and eight pools have gone out of business, and that's the, the most recent I have, and that's actually not completely up to date. There's some others that are potentially have happened in, in that few years since my Kansas Association of Insurance Agencies, or KAI, okay? Any questions about that? Yes, sir.
The Fire Department, you say it dropped out of the pool?
Yes.
And got new insurance?
Yes.
And they still had to pay? Why is that?
That's, that's the agreement that they made when they joined the pool, apparently, is the writing. I don't, I'm not for sure. I didn't see the, the forms, but that's what they ended up having to pay, so apparently.
Okay, so they signed an agreement, and then even though they were out of the pool, they still had to pay, okay?
Twelve years out of the pool.
Right, okay.
So, okay. Anybody else? Okay. I did just want to revisit the numbers just a little bit, because as I had a chance, and so I saw that the proposal had, that the minutes were, or sorry, the agenda was posted Saturday morning, and so I got on and looked, and it was reviewing, and I just was kind of comparison, comparing things a little bit. And there was a couple of differences that I just wanted to point out in the, in the exposures, just to help kind of make it clear, just because of the difference in premium, and that's what kind of is, is making this a, some, some reason, something that you're wanting to look at, is because of difference in premium. So the difference that I think came up was fifty-two thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven currently. Now, I looked at the auto deductible, that's a twenty-five hundred dollar deductible. We had a thousand on most of the vehicles, a few vehicles over a hundred thousand or three thousand. So I got a quote on most of the other vehicles that were at a thousand to move them up to twenty, sorry, to two thousand. Okay, so still less than the twenty-five hundred, but maybe kind of average out with the ones that are, some that are three thousand dollar deductible and, and, and some that are two, so maybe that averages out to twenty-five hundred. So, so I, so I did that, and then I also checked on the inland marine. The inland marine deductible was five hundred, and the deductible at the pool, it looked like to me was, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it looked like to me was a twenty-five hundred as well. Ours is five hundred. So pretty big difference, and so I had them requote that as well, just to be clear. And so that came up to roughly eight thousand, eight hundred dollar savings to be, just a little bit more closer in comparison. So that puts the number at two, at two hundred thousand and sixty. So that's kind of the number we're at. So that basically makes the difference forty, forty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven, if you want to write that in, forty-three, three fifty-seven. Again, quick math, sorry, I'm not making some math class. I didn't intend to. All right. Now, there was a trash truck that had just been recently taken off, but it hadn't been off my spreadsheet yet because it hasn't processed yet. So that's another nine hundred dollars off, so that's forty-two, four fifty-seven. And then I just wanted to throw in the, the, the dividend, because it's something you're going to get, and so it's going to reduce your cost, really, for this year anyway, for that amount. So that's another fourteen thousand or fourteen, eight hundred and fifty-six technically, but, so that really gets us down to twenty-eight, four fifty-seven, okay? Now, I'm willing to admit that I think there's a lot of risk management things that the pool brings that are some opportunities, and maybe would take place of some of the things that you're paying for now, and so there might be a ten thousand dollar savings annually if that's something that you look at, and so I get that. So I'm just saying, let's you, let's say, say the difference is forty, okay? If you had a forty thousand dollar difference, and you stayed in the pool ten years, that's four hundred thousand dollars, right? What is the exposure that you have in the pool down the road of, of them coming back to a settlement? That's, to me, that's kind of the decision that you have to make. It's kind of like this, and I'll end with this. So it's kind of like me this morning, putting on a white shirt, coming to a council meeting tonight, and going out and eating Italian for lunch. It sounded like a really good idea at the time, but really could have been a bad decision after the fact, right? So that's kind of our, that's our proposal. Do you have other questions or any other thing you want to visit with us about?
On the dividend, yeah, I mean, that, that's for the premium year that we just finished.
The previous year, that's right. So you can apply, I mean, so if you're applying that to the previous year, then that doesn't apply. So I get, sure, no, I get that.
But we, I mean, if we chose not to go with EMC, would we still get that dividend for this, the last premium year?
The dividend that you're getting now is for the policy period ending twenty twenty-four. I'm sorry, starting twenty twenty-four.
Before, ending two twenty-five.
April one, twenty twenty-five. So you're getting that. You're getting that.
We get it regardless.
Yes, right.
Just to make sure.
Yes. Well, they're going to give the check to me, so I don't know.
Hey, fair.
No, I'm kidding. I'm kidding. Great, it's on tape, probably.
Any questions for, for Joe or Eric? Jeff?
No, I think I'm, I think I'm good. Those are some good questions, so those are fine. Some things for me, too.
Okay.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it. Okay.
Would you, I know that Matt forwarded you the proposal and the package, but I did ring in.
Great, sure.
The paper.
Sadly, I'm kind of old. Yep, and I have extra points. Well, I like these better.
I like them a little bit.
Personally. Oh, thank you. So in your packets, on the right-hand side, there should be a cover letter, and behind that is the proposal. On the left side are the schedules, property, inland marine, and auto. And then I also had sent to Matt the interlocal agreement. If you decide to join K Camp, we would need to have that executed along with the resolution, which is attached. And Matt, if you don't have it, I do have several copies with me.
We, we copied them.
You do, okay. Just in case you don't, I do have, I've been carrying them around to other cities. Okay, so I'm just going to look at the proposal. And I'm just going to go through it, obviously, the front page, title page. Information about K Camp's on page two. Page three is a list of all of our current members, with the exception of City of West Moreland, which just joined, will be effective April first, hopefully, like yourselves. Our Board of Directors, our Board of Trustees, sorry, is on page four. And then starting on page five is our summary of coverages. So we quoted the expiring policy with EMC. So your buildings, contents, property in the open, EDP is electronic data processing equipment, so it's computers, software that you own, all hardware, vehicles and mobile equipment. So we just took the schedules that were already, that were provided, and we copied all of that over. So I cannot agree more with Joe about hard market. One of the caveats that was placed on us by our reinsurance provider is a, what we call a margin clause. So that is immediately beneath the coverage limits on page five. So what that means is the most we will pay for any one building is a hundred and twenty-five percent of the reported values. So what's dangerous about that is if you don't know the current value of your properties. So that is why K Camp will send out appraisers. If you join the pool, we will send out appraisers this spring and have them walk through all of your buildings and not only estimate the replacement costs, you know, the cost to build it new if it's totally leveled. But they also estimate the contents values based on the type of occupancy it is and the size. So we don't ever want to have a situation where you don't have at least a hundred percent of the value scheduled. So we do, we appraise every four years. Obviously, your first year would be twenty twenty-five, and then we would put you on a rotation, and it would be not again until twenty-nine. In the interim, our appraisers look at the market, and they give us an estimated inflationary value. And so we will apply that year over year until your next appraisal. This, the very bottom line of page five, if I'm not mistaken, most of the city's vehicles were being covered by EMC for property damage, so. were being covered by EMC for property damage, so for, um, I'm not, I'm sorry, property damage is a term and, and we've, that's a liability term, I meant physical damage. Um, so that means whether comprehensive or collision, what, however the reason it was damaged, uh, the majority of them were covered, but there were some that were not. Um, and K Camp covers all of your vehicles for that. Uh, I, if I recall, I probably have a note in here somewhere, I think it's around a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars uh, value of vehicles that weren't previously being covered and we would cover them for the physical. Um, okay, page six. Your property deductibles, uh, we cover flood and earth movement and you can see, um, if you don't have any properties located in a special flood hazard area, then the deductible for that is five thousand. If you happen to have properties that are located there, NFIP is first, the National Flood Insurance Program would apply first and there's a five hundred thousand dollar uh, deductible there, so K Camps would kick in over that. Um, let's see. Well, you can see what all, what all the deductibles are, about two-thirds down, um, the way that we handle our deductibles for a convective storm, and that's a pretty specific definition, uh, but for all intents and purposes, it's mostly wind and hail. Okay, so most of the time, a windstorm, hmm, like we're having right now. Um, or hail, the way that we handle deductibles on that is one deductible for each type of property will apply for the occurrence. So because, um, you have a windstorm and hail deductible of fifty thousand, and again, we quoted exactly what your expiring was, so, um, it was, you know, the, the, or the previous year at least, I don't know what the renewal is, but, um, so fifty thousand deductible will apply for all buildings and contents damaged in the same occurrence, one time you pay them. In addition to that, you would pay twenty-five hundred for all autos damaged in the same occurrence. Same thing for inland marine, so all heavy equipment damaged in the same storm would be at one time twenty-five hundred dollars. Any other type of loss would be only the highest deductible that applies. So, all other perils deductible of five thousand, that applies to property, so buildings and contents. So, I've been driving around for two days, every highway sign warns you about the fire risk, right? High fire. If a fire swept through, uh, damaged buildings and vehicles and mobile equipment, you would pay five thousand dollars. That's it. Um, page seven gives you kind of property covered, non-covered. Page eight, you can see some of our, um, coverage extensions that have sublimits on them. If you guys have any questions about that, I'm happy to address those. Page nine, same thing. Page ten gets into liability coverages. Um, just, if, um, I'm, I know you guys know what this is, but just a brief overview, general liability. Well, first of all, liability pays when somebody claims that the city has done something or not done something that has resulted in their injury or property damage. So, it doesn't have to, um, be true, we're going to defend when that happens. Um, but if it is true or if we can make it go away, we sometimes pay a little bit for that. Uh, so general liability is going to be things that are like, um, you didn't get out and shovel the driveway, or I'm sorry, the sidewalk fast enough and get the snow off and somebody slipped and fell. That's going to be a general liability claim, maybe mowers, throw rocks, something like that. Um, law enforcement activities are very specific to actually, you know, the, the law enforcement officer's duties, you know, in law enforcement. Um, public officials errors and omissions, that is for you as a board. Um, you know, it's if somebody, you know, claims that a decision you made has resulted in um, some kind of loss to them. Uh, employee benefits liability, cyber liability, I'm on the left, page eleven. Uh, moving on to page twelve is a list of the deductibles. So, the way that we structure our deductibles, uh, the per occurrence limit starts at five hundred thousand dollars per occurrence and that's because as a municipality in Kansas, the city is subject to the Kansas Torque Claims Act. That clearly says the most that a municipality is responsible for is five hundred thousand per occurrence or the amount of insurance you carry. So we limit it to five hundred thousand because we don't want you to have to pay more than that. Um, however, we do carry limits of three million dollars per occurrence for claims that don't fall under the Kansas Torque Claims Act. So those are things like claims brought under federal statutes, civil rights violations, unfortunately, police officers are often charged with that. Um, some employment liability claims are also, uh, outside the Torque Claims Act, so those would have limits of a million dollars. I'm sorry, three million, apologize. Um, page thirteen, there are some deductibles for liability. Um, no li, no, uh, general liability deductible or auto liability deductible. So auto liability, you know, somebody runs into the back of somebody else, we are not going to say, um, well, we'll pay everything but what the city has to pay, so. And also as for, for, um, the purposes of liability deductibles, the way K Camp handles them is, uh, when you turn a claim over to us, we handle the claim. And ideally, we handle it so well that you don't even have to pay a full deductible. Maybe we get it settled for twelve fifty. And so, what happens is we settle the claim and then if there's a de, deductible for that type of claim, we will send a letter to the city and say, hey, we settled it for this amount, please reimburse the amount of your deductible for this type of claim. Does that make sense? Okay. Um, page fourteen. Some of our coverages are claims made. What that means is, um, so most coverages are occurrence based. So what that means is you have to have insurance coverage during the period that the incident happened in order for you to have coverage for that. Uh, you have to have a policy that covers that. Claims made is coverage for when a claim is brought against the city. So for public officials liability, I just mentioned a second ago. Um, let's say you made a decision four months ago that the citizens don't even realize has affected them and in the interim, you've, your policy period has changed over and now you're in this policy period, a claims made is going to pay for it in the period that the claim was made. Because if you join K Camp, because public officials liability is a claims made coverage on EMC, we will, um, so here's another little caveat to claims made. You, um, it has to be, the, the incident that gave rise to the claim has to have happened since the retroactive date. So for EMC, EMC, it was September first nineteen eighty-seven. So what K Camp is offering, because we have three million dollar limits, we are offering to pay for public officials liability, the three million for any claims made after April first that also occurred, like the incident occurred after April first. However, we are giving you the same lim, the same limit that EMC had for incidents that happened, and, you know, since September first of nineteen eighty-seven until, up until April. I know that's, I don't even hear myself explaining that.
So we're covered, if that's been, from nineteen eighty-seven shows up.
It would be, yes, so you wouldn't need to purchase additional coverage from EMC just to have that covered, K Camp will cover it, but it's at the lower limit. That's the difference.
Yeah.
Um, so law enforcement liability, theirs was a, an occurrence based policy, ours is claims made and so you don't have to worry about it. Anything that happened prior to April first, you need to turn that into EMC. Anything April, after April first, it is on a claims made basis, but after April first, it doesn't really matter because we're on it anyway, so. Um, okay, employee benefits liability, that's the same thing, um, except it's a different date, it looks like maybe that wasn't a coverage offered in nineteen eighty-seven. Um, in any case, you can see what the limits are in the retroactive dates there. Um, crime coverage is on page fifteen. Um, most of the different types of, uh, perils under crime coverage are a million, do the coverage for a million dollars, up to a million dollars. Um, pages sixteen and seventeen, I know you guys already got a list of our risk management services, um, these sort of just reiterate them and kind of give you an estimated value, um, for a year. And then the back page, um, excuse me. So because we renew all of our members on the same, uh, period, which is a calendar year, the, we did annualize the contribution, so it's easier to compare. Uh, but then for this, um, the, the remainder of twenty twenty-five, your contribution would be one eighteen, uh, oh seventy-seven. Let's see, I do want to leave notes.
Hmm.
Um, good story about fire department, wasn't K Camp. Uh, none of the five pools in Kansas that have assessed was K Camp, K Camp has never once assessed. Um, honestly, the, the statute that allows pools to assess, it's not a bad idea in the beginning when pools are first being formed, uh, because you don't really know what you have. You don't know how many members you're going to have or how much property they're going to own or, you know, what their exposures are in liability and that sort of thing. And so, thirty-five years later, we don't need to assess. Uh, we have su, sufficient surplus that we are kind of blowing this, the benchmark out of the water. Uh, you might remember from David's presentation, uh, the benchmark is ten times your self-insured retention. So self-insured retention is, um, just like insurance companies, K Camp has a reinsurer. Um, for property, our int, retention is four hundred and fifty thousand per year. That's it, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year. If we have, you know, somebody last night asked me, what if you have this huge norm event that, you know, goes across Kansas and, uh, you know, K Camp has eighty-one Kansas counties and twelve cities? What if it wipes out a significant number of your, uh, members? Good question. The most we will pay is four hundred and fifty thousand, the most K Camp will pay, because we have reinsurance over that and they have reinsurance over that. And the benchmark is that we have in surplus ten times the amount of our highest insured ret, or self-insured retention and we have forty-six. So, we're good. Um, any questions? That, I kind of, I felt like that was speed money here.
Yeah. Questions for Maura?
Yeah, I do have a question, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so you had mentioned at the beginning of your presentation about, uh, coming out to, uh, um, to reevaluate all the, uh, the value of the properties and the assets. Uh, is there a chance that that would increase the, the premium that we would pay after that's, uh, reevaluated?
Not this year. It is possible that your values would go up and then they would be, you know, there'd be additional values subject to the rates that we apply. But unless you have something that increases over two and a half million dollars, we don't charge you more in the current year. So that, that's, thank you for that segue. Um, so the appraisals would not cause an increase until your renewal for twenty-six. We also, if you add property throughout the period, unless you buy something that's worth two and a half million dollars, we don't charge you midterm. We, we ask you to turn it in to us, so it's easier at the end of the year to true everything up. Uh, but, you know, vehicles, mobile equipment, even buildings, um, it's just easier for you, for your accounting people, for us. Uh, we just don't do it. So, sorry, that was a really long answer to say no.
That's good, thank you.
I have a question, Maura, we're, we're going to be, uh, building a new fire station and I'm assuming or hoping construction begins in this calendar year. How will that be handled, you know, let's say it's in construction, it's not complete, but an event happens and, and it's damaged?
Um, so if it is under the two and a half million, so it's actually, even though it's the same, same number, it's, it's a different coverage. So in your, uh, proposals, let me tell you what's in each of these.
Sorry.
Um, construction, let me see what it is. Um, I can't find it. In any case, we have two and a half million dollars of coverage for buildings in the course of construction. If that fire station is, is going to cost more than that, you can do one of two things. Either you can purchase the, uh, the coverage for buildings in the course of construction and we have a broker that can help with that. Um, actually, I think K Camp can provide it, but we have to check with our reinsurer and that sort of thing. Um, or you can require that the architect or the builder carry that coverage in your, in the contract that you sign with them to.
That's probably more likely the way it would work, I would think.
Okay, so you think it will be over two and a half?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I wished it wasn't.
Um, anything, any other questions?
Any other questions?
I hope I covered everything.
Well, I, I hope so too.
But I'm just going to sit here and.
Yeah, all right. Thank you, Maura. Siles?
Hey, so we've got both, uh, both of those, their, uh, proposals there, so you've got, uh, an opportunity to kind of look at those, um, don't necessarily need to rehash too much with that. Um, annualized premium for K Camp was one fifty-six, seven nineteen, uh, and then that's a hundred and eighteen, something, I'm, yeah, hundred and eighteen seventy-seven for this year, so then you come up, uh, in January, so you would be switching, if you, if you went to K Camp, you would be switching it to that, um, calendar year. And when do you guys set the rates for?
So around June, we send out letters that indicate approximate increases, like unfortunately, last couple of years, hard market, uh, we have been estimating increases. Um, so we send a letter out, but then it is, um, when are the actual one? Usually, I would say October through December is when we know, yeah.
But you guys give an estimate in the middle half of the year when we're doing budget, babe?
Correct, yes.
Okay. So we'd have some kind of idea what that would look like, um, in the middle half of the year, uh, it's a pool, um, so we're familiar with pools, obviously, we've got KMIT, uh, which is our insurance, our Oregon's Comp Insurance Pool, members of the Power Pool, um, so we kind of understand the pool concept and sort of how that works out and KMIT Health, Health Plan Pool too. Um, so there's an interlocal agreement which is sent out to you guys, uh, if you're interested in doing that, um, you know, we've got the chart there, it kind of shows you the coverages and obviously there's some difference in, in that and Joe brought up the premium difference for that and I don't know if I got all the numbers on that. Well, I think I got most of the numbers. Um, so yeah, I mean, I think the biggest thing here is, is kind of the financial, the financial piece, obviously it's a pretty significant difference, uh, even taking into account some of the things that, that Joe had brought up. Um, so fairly significant financial difference. Um, one of the things that K Camp is offer, offers with the risk management services, uh, is, is that an opportunity there? We may have an opportunity in working with KMIT as well, uh, to, to reduce our, our KMU safety training program, which I, I brought up there as kind of an, it's sort of an aside, but I think it's something that's important to think about too. Um, that's traditionally gone up about three, three percent each year, so it's ten thousand bucks, uh, this year. Uh, we've got actually Karen Funk, who's our safety coordinator, is, is doing this as part of her, um, CPM classes, is designing a state. CPM class is designing a safety program, so. You know, that, that is something that could happen. I think it could happen regardless of whether you chose K Camp or stay with EMC, but. Something to put in, put in the back of your mind there. So, you know, there's definitely some drawbacks with K Camp as far as it's not traditional insurance. And I think. Joe mentioned some of those things. There are some potentials with pool. We kind of understand those, I think. K Camp is financially stable, been in business for thirty-five years. I think the previous pool we talked about, you know, when we, we did this three years ago, we had Midwest Public Risk come in and their, their pool in Kansas significantly smaller. And so that's one of those things that like, maybe give you a little bit of pod and think about that. K Camp's, you know, eighty-one counties, twelve cities and a couple other districts. I know you've got extension districts and.
Yeah, like twenty. Well, twenty-five or so, yeah. Extension districts, community corrections.
Lots of other things, yeah. So.
I counted a hundred and thirteen members, right?
Yep.
Hundred and fourteen now.
Right.
So I think the, the covers are generally comparable as far as what we're gonna get out of that. So, you know, with the savings there, I'm recommending a switch to K Camp. It's nothing against Act three sixty, I just note that they've been very good agents to work with. They've been great to work with, actually. And, you know, if you were to recommend, or if you decide to go back with EMC, I, you know, I wouldn't hesitate to recommend them as agents. They've been great to work with. I would say that, so. Yeah, but you know, the, the savings are pretty significant there. So that's the recommendations to move forward with the K Camp. And if you were to do that, you'd have to adopt the interlocal agreement which we sent out.
I do have a question, Matt. So on top of. The potential savings of just the premiums as well, I, you know, looking through it. The chart that, that you gave for the co-insurance. Cause EMC, they cover the ninety percent, so we still have the ten, correct? So. I guess.
That doesn't, it's not exactly, that's not exactly how it works. So the requirement is that any building. Be, the value on your schedule be at least ninety percent of the cost to rebuild it, of its replacement cost value. And if it isn't at least ninety. You have a penalty. So for any loss on that building, you don't get a hundred percent of the, the amount of damages. It's a percentage of the amount of what was on the schedule divided by the amount it should have been. And then you multiply that by the loss. And so it's like a reduced amount and then they apply the deductible on top of that. And so that's any type of loss on that building. Or that type, sometimes it's on business, personal property. So it might be. I don't know, what's an example? Is it around Pito? Have you ever put that on property? It's like a statue, something like that. I'm just trying to think of what's something significant, big enough that would actually matter.
I don't think.
I'm not great.
Of liberty.
I don't, statue of liberty is gonna, I mean. Nice.
Or something. And like all the desks and chairs and, you know, everything, all the contents in the building. Were, yeah, wet and gross and damaged and, and you needed to replace them. That's gonna be probably expensive. If that type of property has a ninety percent co-insurance, but the amount on your schedule. Doesn't equal ninety percent, at least ninety percent of the cost to replace it. You're not gonna get the full amount of the damages. So like, if, let's say the damages are two hundred thousand, you might get a hundred and fifty-five thousand.
But if you have ninety percent. Then there is no, there would be no penalty then. So you're still, we get replacement costs for that.
Okay.
Does that help in that?
Yes. Thank you.
It's like, for nothing. It's like the worst. The least free for everything possible. Yeah. But see, that, that's exactly why we do the appraisals. Cause we don't want you to be like that, you know?
Get stuck.
Other questions? Marty?
So then you have training for police officers?
We do.
I think at present, we're still out there forty hours of training a year. Does your training count for, and that's what I like to, okay.
Yes.
You guys do?
There is a program, but it's a separate cost on.
Separate cost, okay.
EMC does contract with the group that does that.
Okay, and it does count?
So, in all fairness, ours is a separate cost also. The.
I saw that.
Yeah, the online training is twelve dollars per officer per year.
Yeah, that's, that's actually fairly cheap compared to some classes you have to go do.
But you can't do all of it, like the forty hours, it can't be all online training.
Yeah, no, I know. Yeah, I know about that.
Okay, any other questions? Well, if the council's ready to make a decision, I would, I would accept a motion. To accept one, one of these two proposals.
Well, going based off of what we have and of, of course, the staff recommendations. I feel comfortable making a motion to. Make sure I'm wording this correctly, to accept K Camp's proposal for.
For the city property and liability. Is acceptable and, and then you would include the signing the interlocal agreement. Or do you, does that need to be?
That's either a separate.
Separate, okay. So you would, you're moving to accept the K Camp proposal?
Yes, to accept K Camp's proposal.
Okay. Is there a second? Jeff Jorgensen, is that a second? Okay?
Yes.
All right, just want to make sure. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? I apologize. Any further discussion? Any other questions? Hearing none, I would ask the council to vote. We'll do a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed?
Aye.
You're not opposed? Yeah, you just had to do aye, right? So. I have, anybody opposed? Okay, hearing none, the motion is, is accepted and approved. And we will move forward with K Camp. Now, I'm going to require a motion to execute the interlocal agreement. To become members of K Camp. Would somebody care to make that motion?
I would like to make the motion.
Resolution. Yeah, it's resolution twenty-five dash oh four.
Excuse me. Adopt resolution twenty-five dash oh four. Is that correct?
Yes.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second? Councilman McCarty, seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, since this is a resolution, we poll the council. Councilman Jorgensen, we'll let you go first.
Yes.
Councilman McCarty. Councilman Wilkins.
Yes.
Okay, resolution twenty-five dash oh four is hereby adopted. And the city will execute the interlocal agreement with K Camp. And again, I would like to offer my thanks to all of you. And especially for all the, the hard work that you've done the last two years. Eric, I know you've had a lot of heavy lifting there, so we appreciate it. Yeah.
We appreciate it.
Yeah. So. That will conclude our business section. You, you're all welcome to stay, but you are welcome to, if you choose to, to retire at this point, that's great. You can do that. We're gonna move on to our business items. Tonight, we have one item in that section. And that is consideration of a job description for the golf clubhouse manager slash concession manager. Mr. Styles?
Thank you, sir. So this is one we've never had before. Since we assumed the management of the golf, from the golf association, we've never had a. Position description for this, so it's something we've had to kind of create with Carolyn Ray passing away. We sort of had an opportunity there to rethink what needs to happen with operations and availability. So I had David Ediger and Bryant Young kind of put together a proposal for this position. So what you have is a job description there for, it's a seasonal position. It can work as early as kind of February to the end of November. We play that by ear depending on kind of what the weather looks like. And so that's one of those things that it's not real formal as far as what it is. So they're not, they're not in there when the clubhouse isn't open. And so we want to, you know, think about that. It also centralizes concession ordering for all of our. All of our parks and recreation facilities, so the pool and also the sports complex and food trailer when we have that out and deployed. This person, this position would be ordering for that too. We feel like that's something that can be handled pretty easily with that position, so. We wanted to make sure that that was included in that as well. So it's a little bit different kind of approach to that. We needed some temporary help, so I authorized putting Michelle Ediger in there as somebody who's got a lot of experience with Square. And Michelle is David's husband, and so.
Oh, she's a wife.
Oh, right.
Wife, Vanessa.
Strike that. Wife, my bad. And so that falls under our nepotism policy. We've got a pretty specific nepotism policy about the department head. And the person working under them can't be in the same household, closely related, in this case, a husband and wife. Keep that straight. Never gonna live that one down with her. So what I did was put Michelle under my office and kind of farmed her out. Admittedly kind of skirting that, but we needed to, to get it going. Cause we didn't really have anything and we were trying to, we gotta get to this point where we even get the job description approved, so. I am letting you know that I am skirting that policy a little bit, but the intention is to hire somebody in there full time.
Kind of push the limit.
Well, push the limit a little bit to get things moving and then the idea is that we're gonna hire somebody. And that would be kind of how that would look. And, you know, Michelle is great, highly skilled. I don't know that this is gonna be an issue at all. Hopefully that they can find somebody that she can help train and get up in speed. If not, and they want to continue with her, then we'd have to come back to you guys to get approval for that, because I'm not, I'm not gonna skirt that issue forever. That just doesn't make any sense. So I just want to make that, make you all aware of that right now. This position is funded through the golf course revenue. It's, it's something we planned for. Obviously, we had Carolyn in that position, but now we don't, so. We're, we're hoping to get a longer season out of this particular person so that there may be a little bit more cost, but also generates more revenue because we'll be open more, so. We're recommending moving forward with the job description to formalize that position. Once, once approved, we'll get it out there and start posting and accepting resumes for, or applications, I guess.
Do we, we take care of that problem now, so we don't have to later, or would that be out of line?
I, I would give it an opportunity to hire somebody. I don't think you need to make any decisions about Michelle right now.
That would be my recommendation.
Yeah, I wouldn't.
I think, I think the nepotism policy is there for a reason.
Yeah, it is.
And, you know, it just puts people in a hard spot. And, you know, I, I just feel like. If, if we're going to bring that back to the council, it needs to, it needs to, we need to have given the chance to find somebody.
Well, I didn't mean, I meant.
Right.
So we would. Cover the bases, that's what I.
Oh, sure. Yeah, well, you're aware of it at least. And so, I mean. If you're uncomfortable with that, then I can take some action now at your direction.
No, I'm not uncomfortable. I had to explain what's going on.
Yeah, no, I was more so just making sure we're not gonna. Run into any issues down the line, but I mean, it is just temporary.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know.
I don't like it's, yeah.
I understand it's temporary, that's fine. I have no problem.
Again, that's just goes with this job, if you will. You know, the chance that somebody might not feel the same way about it as, as you. So, you know, that's just the nature of, of, of this, of this gig that we have when we're elected officials, right?
Nature of the beast, right?
Yep. Got to make the best, best choices and decisions we can.
Yeah, and then. And, and I assume it's fine, but also just making sure, you know, Andrew, we're not gonna. You know, since we have this official nepotism policy in place. I mean, making this exception isn't gonna fall, I mean, liability, you know, it's not gonna cause us any.
Because it's a policy. It's, it's totally a policy decision of the council to decide whether they want to make an exception in one case or rearrange some things in order to work around it, but. But, good question, but you do have the authority to do what you want to do in your judgment on this case.
Yeah, and I think we have, you know, I mean, I think we said multiple times, multiple times, we do trust Matt's judgment in regards to these matters, so. If he feels the need to make an exception to the nepotism policy. I will trust, you know, I trust you.
And, and, and I think, I think, you know, you said something in there that, that needs some clarification and that's temporary.
Yeah.
You know, I think, again, it's just my personal take is. It's never good to crazy quilt your policies and have a lot of exceptions.
Yeah.
So generally, it's better to be consistent from a policy standpoint. That's why I'm. Very, very much in favor of seeing if we can't hire someone. Either that or we're gonna have to let David go.
I'm not gonna do that. I'm not gonna do that.
No, we're not, we're not gonna do that. We're not gonna do that.
I don't want to be direct.
No. We're not doing that. Just so we're clear. So, any other questions regarding this particular job description?
Just one more.
Yes.
I'd just like to ask, just to have it on the table. Is there, I guess, any bites so far for the position that we know of, or, you know, anybody that we think we might be able to funnel into it?
Unclear at this point. We've been focused on hiring a number two at the golf course, the assistant superintendent, which we have. We've got it offer out to somebody, a conditional offer, so. Now that we've filled that, we can kind of shift gears and focus a little more on that. So I don't know, there may be somebody out there. Ryan maybe has somebody in mind, I don't know.
Okay, anything else?
Yeah, a couple of questions.
Yes.
So. The, I had a chance to review the job description a little bit. Is it? Is it pretty expanded from the previous role that was in there? I, I know you had mentioned one thing, Matt. The. Purchasing is gonna be a little bit more widespread? Are there any other things that are a big difference from the, the previous role that Carolyn had?
Uh, not especially. It's pretty. It, it, I mean, it stays pretty much in that lane. There may be a few things that get expanded out, but I think probably the biggest stuff is the purchasing and then. We switched, you know, we switched last summer to Square and that's a little bit more. Technologically challenging. And so there needs to be some, you know, you need to have a different kind of skillset. Carolyn was great, but she wasn't great with computers. And so she's kind of struggled with that a little bit. And so I think this is, you know, this addresses that, but it really doesn't expand that role terribly much.
And then as far as during the season, so there's a few months there where there just, there's nobody in that position. I understand that, but during the season. Is it, is it pretty much full time, sort of forty hour a week position? I, I, I may have missed that in the job description.
No, it's not supposed to be. Sometimes it does end up getting higher hours, you know, I think we, we kind of talked last year about thirty hours. There may be an opportunity where we're gonna, well, I know we're gonna need to hire a few more attendants. Right, last year we had just basically Carolyn, and so there were some times when she had some pretty high hours. She's a seasonal employee, so she wasn't ever eligible for overtime pay and benefits and things like that, because seasonal. Seasonal employees, temporary seasonal employees don't have that eligibility, but. It would be, I, you know, I think we're, we're thinking in that thirty hour range, not anything beyond that.
Sounds flexible, sometimes less, sometimes maybe more.
Yeah, it depends. Tournament weeks will probably be more. And then, you know, we'll, we'll have to kind of flex around. Like I say, we'll have more attendance hopefully to work with.
Okay, good, thank you.
Just one question for clarification. This person would be purchasing. Just one question for clarification. This person would be purchasing supplies but not supervising or managing the other concession.
Just buying the supplies and making sure it gets stocked.
Anything else? Hearing none, I would consider a motion to, uh, approve the, uh, job description for the golf clubhouse manager slash concession manager. Councilman McCarty moves. Is there a second? Councilman Wilkins, seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Okay, opposed? Motion carries and the, uh, position is hereby approved, Matt. And that leads us to your report. So you get to continue.
Okay, just a couple of things today. Uh, I wanted to make you guys aware of the Harrington Clinic. It's the Harrington Clinic buildings, buildings, I guess. Uh, there's three there. So they're gonna have an online auction, April fourteen through sixteen. And I, I've included the, uh, what do you call it? The online prospectus form thing they have there. Uh, there are some inaccuracies in there. I wanted to make sure to clarify that. And we've clarified it with the company too, that uh, they cannot do surgical procedures in there due to zoning restrictions and fire codes. So uh, same issue that Harrington had and they persisted with continuing to build those suites. They cannot and will not be able to do that here. Um, whoever buys it. Um, it's a no reserve auction, so that there's, the minimum bid's one dollar. Um, makes me a little nervous. I mean, there's three, three million bucks invested down there and it's not finished. And I didn't know if you went through it, Lou. I mean, is there anything you could add to it? I mean.
You know, there's, there are pieces of it that, that are certainly more than over, overdesigned for what its allowed purpose would be. The, uh, the HVAC system and there's an air makeup system in there. And those are all state of the art Cadillac systems. So that, and that's for the, the, the main center facility primarily. There was a generator there that is no longer there. Um, the, uh, the third building, which was the old Bartle Insurance Building, that basically is pretty gutted and pretty gnarly looking. Um, they use that for a construction office, you know, to, to do cutting and, and, and labor, you know, on materials in their stored materials. And it's really in pretty rough shape. So, uh, you know, it, the flooring in the new, newer section, if you will, is still yet to be done, although I think the flooring exists. It's there, it just hasn't been put in. So the, the, the concern that I have is, is, is a concern that we've dealt with in the past. And that's getting an absentee owner that's not of the community and not, uh, and not then paying attention and maintaining it properly and, and just leaving a blighted hole on Main Street. That's, that's the chance that we're taking. So you know, hopefully Jane will step up and put your dollar in, see what she can do.
There's not, I mean, the, the clinic part on the north is pretty well.
And you know, it could, it can be used as a medical clinic. It could be used for anything like that. Um, you know, the, this, the thing is, is that we already have an optometrist office and clinic, plus a chiropractic clinic, you know, that already exists on that same block. And so, you know, when we have a, a pretty well-established clinic out at our hospital that, uh, that, uh, you know, is, is, uh, in existence. So I'm just not sure what else. You know, we have, and just around the corner, of course, across the street here, we have a dentist office and clinic. So. So I'm not sure, you know, what, what purpose it could be, uh, it could be used for, but, uh, it is gonna be sold. That, that much is a given. So anyway, sorry.
See what it is. No, I think that's good, that's a good, uh, good piece of information there. Cause I, who knows? I have the same concerns with it, but I, you know, I don't know we would have a vision with it or not. But uh, anyway, so that's the, uh, that building will be up on, uh, April fourteen through fifteen, or sixteen, excuse me. Uh, audit update, obviously they weren't here today. They, I think they ran a few more things than they, they thought and weren't able to come today, but they'll be here the first. Uh, KPP bill, got that for you there. You can look at that. Uh, had a positive ECA for us. I guess it's a negative ECA technically, but um, the bill was nearly as much as it was last year, but we actually sold more electricity, um, one hundred and nineteen kilowatt hours. So
Spoiler alert, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, next, or the February ECA is gonna be better. So we'll, we'll see a even better, more favorable ECA.
Good. And that, their meeting is Thursday, right? Uh, big check presentation. You'll notice we got a new big check over there, uh, three hundred thousand from the Department of Commerce. Uh, CUBG program, this is the commercial rehab project for one twenty-sixth month. I thank Lou for going up and attending that, shaking the hands, making nice with the governor, Lieutenant Governor.
Lieutenant Governor, yep.
So, um, Mike King, he's our representative, reached out about maybe holding a local celebration. So kind of work with Eric Driggers, who owns the building and the project, um, to see if that's something he wants to do. Uh, updates on some things, AMI equipment, that stuff is scheduled to be here the last week of this month. And then we'll have hopefully April uh, to get that in. Orchard Ridge is, we're waiting on some things on the midnight housing engineering team to get them, some issues worked out on sanitary and storm sewer. And then I'll go through plating and we'll have some things we have to do with the RHAD. Uh, we gotta get all that cleaned up first though. Strategic planning, hoping to have that all distributed, the notes I was actually working on this afternoon. I think I'll be well ahead of the April first. Uh, thanks to everybody for coming to that. So I think it's coming together pretty well. Uh, solar farm stuff, we've got the first shipment of solar panels out there. If you wanna, doesn't look like much, but you can see the crates that are stored out there. Uh, those are solar panels and some of the equipment for that. Uh, it's in the lagoon, locked up in the lagoon. Uh, fire station financing, so part of the USDA program or the finance requirements is that we can engage with our local banks and see about potential financing with them. Uh, I've gotten three, I, I talked to Vintage, uh, CMB and Inter, Emprise. All three had some interest in potentially being part of the financing. So uh, we're working through what that looks like. I know none of them can give us the same terms we can get with, uh, rural development, but um, we, we gotta do our due diligence, kind of work through that process. So uh, childcare center completion, we were originally gonna do a walkthrough today, but got delayed because the flooring installation got delayed. Um, so it'll be next week, I think we're gonna do walkthrough. So uh, everything kind of moving forward with that. And those are sort of the big projects right now. And that's all I have for right now.
How was, how is the staffing part coming?
Still, they were doing interviews for directors, still looking for a director. They haven't got that nailed down yet.
Any other questions for Matt? Okay, hearing none, we will go to our final public comment opportunity. Uh, is there anybody for here from the public that would care to comment? Okay, hearing none, we will close that and we will move to council comments. Councilman Wilkins?
Um, yeah, I would just like to thank everyone that came out to that special council meeting for the strategic planning. Uh, wasn't that long of a night. Wanted to go till two AM, but I got uh, but no, it was good. There was a lot of good discussion and it's just nice to see people come together. Uh, just to get ideas to better our community. It was nice.
Councilman McCarty? Councilman Jorgensen?
I think that was a no.
Okay. Very good. Um, I want to just say, uh, in terms of, um, her comments that I appreciate the, uh, the heavy lift that we did today on the insurance. That's, you know, it's it's tough when you've been with a company for, for as long as we have. And, and you know, it's really not necessarily that they did a bad job or anything that, that, things like that make it a lot easier. But, uh, it's really just comes down to what's in the best interest of the community and the, and the citizens that, uh, that we're here to support. And I will tell you, just given the climate, you know, in Washington, and I've had an opportunity to be there this year. And up in Topeka, I've had a couple of opportunities to be in Topeka. I will tell you that, uh, there is a lot of pressure to figure out ways to do things more efficiently. And you know, this is, I see this as just one of those ways for us to be more efficient and more cost effective in, in, in the way we're, we're dealing with our tax money. And as Matt pointed out in his, uh, summary, I mean, we're talking almost two and a quarter mils of, uh, of tax, taxes, you know, that this savings represents. So it's not insignificant. So I appreciate everybody's thoughtfulness. I appreciate the questions and appreciate the decision. We're excited to, uh, to be that hundred and fifteenth I assume that they, that, that, uh, that we won't get blackballed or anything. There's no, there's no executive committee that says at, at the end that, no, we don't want them. They need the dues.
Known about.
That's great. Okay, if there's, is there any other business that needs to come before the council? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jeff.
Drive safe.